...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock Malt?
Shaw?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
McIntyre?
Here.
Are there any agenda deletions or corrections? The consent agenda. Our claims are totaling $775,258.09. Minutes to approve our regular board meeting of 5/21/19, special meeting 5/29/19. C approved hire for Christian Moorehart, seasonal conservation worker, effective 5/20/19. D approved hire for Wade Henry, seasonal part-time, secondary roads, effective 6/5/19. E approved hire of Miller Butler, seasonal part-time, secondary roads, effective 5/21/19. F approved hire of John Wood, seasonal part-time, secondary roads, effective 6/4/19. G approved classification for Michael Hagan from RNI to EOI, secondary roads, effective 5/29/19. H approved classification for Preston West from RMT 2 to EO1, secondary roads, effective 5/15/2019. I approved Class C native liquor license for Annelise Winery LLC. J approved Class B beer (BB) liquor license for Back Pocket Brewing LLC. K approved Class C native wine liquor license for Two Saints Winery. L set public hearing date of 7/2/19 at 9:35 a.m. for proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Warren County Justice Center new construction. M set public hearing date of 9/2/19 at 9:36 a.m. regarding bid results.
7/2.
Okay, 7/2/19 at 9:36 a.m. regarding bid results and award recommendations for the Warren County Justice Center new construction. That is our consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Moving on to item two, public hearing regarding rezoning of land from A1 to RR1 submitted by Larry Hughes with possible action.
Crystal? Listen to item 9/35.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to consider agreement with five-year contract for law enforcement services with City of Martinsville with possible action.
This is the same law enforcement contract that we approved with the other entities. This is the last point. I'm with Martinsville City Council. They approved the agreement and sending it towards the board for approval. This is that same dollar amount that we agreed upon.
Which is an increase after several years.
Right, it's increasing at over a five-year increment to take it to a 6 before he split.
I remove the five-year contract for law enforcement services with the City of Martinsville.
Second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
All right, let's consider, item five, consider appointing BOKF in A of Lincoln, Nebraska as substitute paying agent, registrar and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and registrar and transfer agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement with possible action.
This is the paying agent on our existing bonds. We were with Bankers Trust. They were assigning it to United Missouri Bank. DA Davidson, our bond advisor, came up with this bank, it will save us $2,000 over the life of the bonds to transfer it to this BOK as opposed to one way or the other. We had to transfer it to somebody. Bankers Trust was assigning it over. So this is for the board to transfer that over. And that's just the continued, every year, there's a fee for them to handle the bonds.
And apparently, nobody in Iowa does it.
It's not. It's not a, I think Bankers Trust, at the time that we issued bonds, Bankers Trust is really the only one in Iowa that handled the bonds. And now they've assigned these out. So there really wasn't anything local to go to.
I will make a motion to appoint BOK Financial as the substitute paying agent and registrar and transfer agent.
Second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item 9/35. We'll go ahead and do item two, public hearing regarding rezoning of land from A1 to RR1 submitted by Larry Hughes with possible action.
I move the regular public hearing, second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Larry Hughes wishes to rezonate 67 acres of land on Highway 92 from A1 to RR1 to plot 17 to 18 lots ranging in size from 2 to 5 acres and keeping 7 to 10 acres in green space with trees for residents to use as hovering space. Rezoning is proposed between the 5256 and 5494 block of Highway 92 on the south side. Will the proposed district be of benefit to the general public when on the line? Is the location of the proposed district in accordance with the land use plan and policies? No, the call for agricultural. Could the proposed district be considered spot zoning? A1 surrounds its property, so I went on the line. Will the proposed district maintain or protect property values of adjacent landowners? I went on the line on that. Is the time, schedule, and type of development considered within the proposed district reasonable? Went on the line. Does the proposed district correspond to the area of proposed developments? Went on the line, just planning to plot 17 to 18 lots ranging from 2 to 5 acres in the plan because the plan calls for A1. Will the proposed district be in accordance with the intent, purpose, and spirit of the zoning ordinance and land use plan? Land use, plan calls for agricultural. So I said no. Will the proposed district be located at least a quarter mile from any existing livestock heap lot with more than 500 head of livestock on B or poultry farm housing more than 5,000 fell? Yes. Does at least 75% of the property in the proposed district have a corn suitability rating, CSR of 55 or less? No, 25 acre piece has a rating of 63.89 and 40 acre piece has a rating of 70.28. Is the proposed district or any part of it located within an area subject to flooding? Yes. Will the development within the proposed district be located outside of areas subject to flooding? I went on the line, FEMA flood plain running down the middle that will not be buildable. And haven't seen the proposed subdivision plans yet, but she did kind of submit a concept plan since that. Does the proposed district include heavily timbered areas? Yes. Will the development within the proposed district minimize the loss of woodlands or timber? Went on the line. Will the proposed source of water supply and wastewater treatment meet requirements of Warren County Board of Health? Yes. Larry would have to work with environmental health on their subjects. Will telephone gas or electric service be available to serve development in the proposed district? Yes, Larry would have to work with each company for each of the services to the area. Will the existing roads and bridges providing access to the proposed district be adequate to serve the proposed development in accordance with the requirements and standards of the Warren County engineer? This is actually on state highway. It's on Highway 92, so it's outside of county engineers' hands on this one. So I went on the line, it's inside subdivision roads would need to be paved per the Warren County zoning subdivision ordinance. And Larry would need to work with David Carroll on those roads inside the subdivision and with the state DOT on entrance to the subdivision. However, I know at our last meeting with the zoning commission, Larry did state that he was not interested in paving the inside roads to the development. So is the classroom capacity and the school bus service to the proposed district adequate to serve the proposed development in accordance with the requirements and/or recommendations from the local school district? And I went on the line, and I did because Martinsville St. Mary's School District, I had mailed out a notice to them prior to the zoning commission meeting and hadn't received anything back. And we have since received a response back, and I'll read that into the record today. Will existing and/or proposed parks in the vicinity of or within the proposed district be adequate to serve the proposed development in accordance with the requirements and/or recommendations of the Warren County Conservation Board? Yes. Will the development within the proposed district minimize soil erosion dust and surface water runoff during and after construction in accordance with the requirements and standards of Warren County engineer? Went on the line. Is the proposed district outside of approach areas and landing strips? Not applicable. Will the development within the proposed district minimize noise levels during and after construction so as not to create a nuisance to adjacent landowners? Yes. Is this located within an urban expansion area as shown on land use plan? No. The proposed subdivisions off of 92 FEMA flood plain going through the center of it, which is not buildable without jumping through extra hoops. Roads inside the development per the subdivision ordinance for Warren County, these roads should be paved. Staff recommendation would be to consider all case tax presented by applicant. See what Lindsay hears back from FEMA and if we hear anything from Martinsville Schools and get a good idea of how many lots are being planned. I hear back from Martinsville School District, May 31st. It was received, they had emailed it and it was received in our office yesterday morning. To whom it may concern, it has come to my attention that Larry Hughes would like to develop new homes in a private driveway just east of the residence of 5252 Highway 92. The Martinsville St. Mary's School District met with the Jagerson family that lives at 5252 Highway 92 prior to the 2018-19 school year. Due to the location of their driveway, the amount of traffic, and the history of accidents that's on Highway 92, we made the decision that we would not be able to pick up and drop off the Jagerson children. This is to inform the Warren County Zoning Commission and all new families that will be living in this new development that Martinsville St. Mary's School District will not be picking up and/or dropping off children. Again, due to the location of the new driveway and the amount of traffic that's on Highway 92, it is not a safe, it is not a safe area to be transporting children to and from. Dave Banks and Carol Banks have been veteran bus drivers of our district for over 40 years and collectively agree with the decision that safety is our main priority and this new location is not a safe area. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. Assigned by Jill Gavin, the business manager and transportation director for Martinsville St. Mary's. And it was signed by Dave and Carol Banks, both the bus drivers for Martinsville St. Mary's. And I know that the Jagersons are here and I know, you know, he addressed that, that he, they took their kids to school every day and picked them up every day because there was no transportation provided by the district. So that was all of the written correspondence that we got. And that was new again since Kerry sent gave you the packets.
Lindsay?
Yes.
How many things I didn't remember with me that you read off yes notes? Is there like 20 of those or?
Yeah, I'm on the line on a lot of those. I, it's, you know, granted it is on pavement, but when, you know, it does have FEMA going through it, so it has some flooding on it. And our ordinance states that, you know, it should not have any flood plain on the land to be developed. However, you know, that can always be worked out with FEMA and our new board of engineers and, you know, those can all be, but it was discussed in the zoning commission meeting that there needed probably be a couple of bridges built in there. So there's a lot of concerns with the location of the land and so I would say there was, looks like there's about, it looks like there's about 15 or 16 kind of on the line and a couple yeses and no's. So it's just kind of a tricky location where it's at and I know the school district thing, that's a big, that's a big concern. It's at the bottom of a hill. It's at the bottom of the hill on Highway 92. As you come down the hill heading east, it's at the bottom of the hill. And I can see where, you know, people are coming 55 miles an hour. I can see where buses aren't going to, even if the Jagersons kind of head towards, more towards the top of the hill, I can see where they are going to stop, let them at the bottom of the hill, so.
This is a public meeting, so if you want to address this item, please come up and state your name and your address.
Okay, sorry, I'm extremely nervous today. I don't know why. I'm Mark Jagerson from 5252 Highway 92. We've only lived there for three years, my two children there. I live on the top of, my driveway is at the top of the hill coming out of Martinsville on the second house on the south side of the road. I'm at the top of the hill, right past my driveway, the hill goes down. My next neighbor is Warren, he's here too, and that's where they want to put the drive in there. That's my lots, I think 200 feet wide, his lots, I think less than 100 feet wide, so you're talking maybe 300 foot side distance there, okay? I did get a call from the school two days before school started this last year and they told me that they are not going to stop the bus because it's way too dangerous. And I said, okay, you know, we'll figure it out. So my wife goes in late to work, I pick them up after work. It's a pain, but we do it. The school's awesome. I'm not going to take them out of there. I lived in Saverville Township, beautiful house, all brick, ranch walkout, had a big field behind me. I lived there for eight years. And next thing I know, there's a bunch of flags back there. Eleven houses got built in my backyard, three of them butted up to the back of me. $50,000 cheap lots, cheap houses, above ground septic tanks. If anybody's dealt with those before, when something goes wrong with them, a buzzer goes off. It doesn't stop until somebody comes and fixes that. And this is what would be here, it'd have to be above ground tanks with the flood stuff going through there. I have a lot to say, but honestly, with everything that's already been said, I don't think I need to, but I don't think I'll have another chance, so I'm going to keep talking here. I moved from Saverville after that happened. We looked for 11 months to look for a house. I decided we wanted to look for a small community, get our kids into a farm, so that's what we looked for. I looked all the way up to Ames, I looked all the way down to Creston, found a house that was 119 years old, beautiful two-story old house, needed a lot of work. I knew I could do the work, I wanted to raise my kids on a farm. So we got a little hobby farm, chickens, peacocks, alpacas, goats. My kids know chores, they know work boots. They, I'm raising them a little bit different than what I see every time I go out to eat, you know? So this is a big deal for me. I haven't slept since the last meeting, honestly. I mean, this is driving me crazy. We're all in A1, everything around it is A1, everything. There's no RR1 even close to this. This would be land lots, this would be a land lot deal, one way in, one way out, surrounded by A1, surrounded by A1. I mean, it, um, so tricky situation, though it's dangerous. I've lived there in three years. I've personally seen two major wrecks, including semi's box trucks and actually even a tow truck wrecked right in front of my house. I work and in three years, I've seen two major wrecks. When a wreck happens, the sheriff has to park in my driveway to stop the traffic coming from the west. So it is a pileup basically. He was there in June of last year. He always talks, if I see him, I'll walk out, we talk a little bit. And he said, did you know the last wreck right there? And pointed right there and said, that's where the last death on Highway 92 happened. Right there, he pointed. So it's extremely dangerous. I'm not a college graduate, but I tried to figure out some of these regulations and stuff, so. The chapter 19 stuff, they're talking about side distance requirements, 55 miles an hour, 500 feet for unpaved roads, 55 miles an hour for paved roads of 600 feet. Everybody drives Highway 92, nobody goes 55 miles an hour, not by me. Two miles outside of Martinsville, on eight miles outside of Indianola. If you're smart, your cruise control's locked into 62, 63 and you're cruising. Semi trucks, concrete trucks are not going to be able to stop for people turning in and out. 17 lots, I mean, minimum, what is that? 60 cars that are coming in and out of there? I mean, that's, it's just dangerous, that's all it is. It's plain dangerous. Yeah, okay, and then at the bottom of that hill too, right where, I guess they're going to have to put a bridge in where the creek comes over the road. When you go down that hill, there's a bump, bam, where your car will kind of slam down because that road's giving away. They've had to refix the same spot every three years because the water table's too high and it's washing the road, it washes the road away. It does, but last September, when we had no rain up that way, in September, we had a ton of rain, that creek went over, cars were hydroplaning. It happened. And then, right after our last meeting with this last rain on May 13th, it happened again. I've walked down there to that creek, all the scrap metal of the trees and stuff, they're up on the banks. You can tell that water rushes through there when it comes. So with that said, again, I went to the regulations and looked and I think it's the number, I think it's the number one thing on here, yeah. So chapter 41, number six, criteria for RR1 districts, page 271A, the number one thing, the proposed district will not include any land subject to flooding. There's a creek right through the middle of it. He's already sold two or three lots off of it. He should have added that creek to one of those sales and then he'd have land that didn't have flood on it. But this flood goes right through the middle of this property. And two bridges, I mean, if you're going to have two exits, I guess, or just one exit and people will be trapped there, I guess, when it floods, I don't know. And then you heard G is the service of the school bus, I mean, 17 houses, no school bus service coming or going? Boy. And then he said he didn't even want to pave the roads, he just wanted to throw some rock down and then have HOH deal with it after the fact, so. Sorry, again, I'm very nervous here. That creek we're talking about, my neighbor's yard, Warren, that's 26 feet from his back corner of his property to the edge of that creek, so the bridge is going to have to be one heck of a bridge that gets put in there. And I know he's done other developments. I've actually drove by him. I see him, his lots for sale at places, a Mexican place here in Indianola has a little board, he's got a little deal, come by a lot from there. I drove by him, hey man, they're nice, but they're on a nice flat road where you can see traffic coming and going, easy to get in, easy to get out. This is just a plain dangerous place. If you guys drive 92 and thought to yourselves, where's the worst place we can put another driver? I mean, this is the spot you're going to pick on that whole drive. I'm not going to waste any more of your time, I'm like shaking and stuff, so thank you. I'm sorry, I don't do this a lot, I'm very sorry, so.
Any others?
Did I hear you? Lindsay said he was going to do something with the Home Moors Association for no paved road?
What was that?
That the development would be responsible for their non-paved road?
Well, he's, our ordinance says you need to pave the interior roads.
Right.
He stated at the last meeting.
That he has no plan?
That he has no plan to pave the interior.
Okay, so he's asking for variance in that requirement?
He's going to have to ask for variance for on that, so. His plan is to not pave the interior roads if that is all.
You guys probably know where I stand on that one. By the way, I'm reading here, it's 20520050. Thank you.
Any others? Seeing here in none, I would take a motion to go back into regular session.
I'll move.
Yes, yes, sir.
I was just waiting to see if there are any other speakers, I'm sorry. My name is Larry Hughes, 208 East First Street, Actworth, Iowa. This is a unique piece of property. You've heard a lot of negatives. I want to present the positives, first of all. There were, the zoning board had three considerations, concerns. One was the flooding. The flooding that has been talked about is only in the ditch. And what it is, is water that may back in from Middle River, which is three quarters of a mile north. It comes in as a back channel, as a back horse. Here's the, the area showing that. This would be the 26 acres that's outlined here and then this is the forehead here. Then this map shows that it only goes to Kennedy, which is one mile south of Highway 92. So it's just water coming in from when Middle River goes out. The site was a concern for them. The other day, I've been out a couple times, grandson and I did go out and wheel from the center of my driveway to the center of Mr. Jagerson's driveway, and it's 763 feet. I agree with Mr. Jagerson, his driveway is just over the brow of a little hill. But I think Mr. Jagerson should go back to the school board because I also wheeled on down the 50th Avenue. From 50th Avenue to Mr. Jagerson's driveway is almost exactly 1,200 feet. There was one point for probably 30 or 40 feet, I had parked my car on the north side of the drive, the north side of Highway 92, right at the center point of Mr. Jagerson's driveway, with the headlights on and the blinkers. I wheeled down to 50th, I could see my lights from 50th. I could see my lights until about the point of 540 feet away from my car, from the center of his driveway. And then I couldn't see my lights for about 40 feet, it was about, it's actually 503, so less than 40 feet, but I couldn't see the top of my headlights. My headlight is, the top of my headlight is 41 inches from the ground. And bear in mind, I was on the rock four inches lower than what the asphalt would be typically, so might have even been less than that. He has a case to go back to the school board, I would say, and say, look, your bus lights, if your drivers will put their flashers on three or 400 feet from my driveway, these drivers at these drivers, uh, at fifty-five mile an hour, the speed limit, should be able to stop so that there's not a problem. Obviously, there is speeding there, and so that's a, that's a problem. So, from, and here's the map, uh, showing that. This would be my current driveway. This is up the hill, and this is, I'm not a real engineer by any sense, not even a good drawer, but this is kind of the scenario. Just a little bump in the road here to the west of Mr. Jaggersen's driveway that does, for an instant, down in this area here. You can't, couldn't see my lights when I was on this, uh, on this side of the road. This is fifty up here, I wheeled down there twelve-hundred feet, and I could see my lights from there all the way up. I don't believe that the school board, if he's paying taxes there, that they could deny him. You know, the lights on school buses are eight or nine feet off the ground, well, maybe about eight or nine feet, but at least seven feet off the ground. And they should be able to be seen from any distance, from 50th straight on, so I don't know what their problem is. But the, uh, the thing, the third thing was, they were concerned about, uh, putting, and I had stated that I really didn't have interest in paving in there. The county, as you remember, passed, I think in 2006, a rule that, uh, probably that you had to pave the crowded road, the gravel road out to the nearest paving. And there's not been a developer willing to do that in the thirteen years. So you haven't got any additional roads paved that I'm aware of, and I would sure stand corrected if that's the case. The interior roads, there's, you get closer to Des Moines, you can afford to do that, because closer to Des Moines, we get double the price on our lots up there. But we're, we're out here more in a rural area, and people are moving out here because they can't afford the high-end lots in town. To do a concrete road in there, curb and gutters, such as your law requires, let's see, I'm, uh, it's a half a mile to the back, and we've got a little curb in my road, which I'll show you just a little bit. So I probably would have a half of a mile, that would be seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, based on 1.5 million curb and gutter for a mile. I can't get enough out of lots to pave it, so if you were to require me to pave it, then I would just say, no, I just can't do it, and I would back away, and we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even ask for the, this thing. There was a concern that people, if, if for some reason, and people were really, uh, concerned about the flood. And it's just in the ditch area, doesn't get out on the land, I've owned this farm since, I stopped thinking. Ninety-seven, ninety-eight, I found it until 2012, never had water out on the land. Anytime that I was ever down there or going in to do crop, we got a little runoff from the hill to the east. And here, a couple of years ago, we tiled directly down to the river from there to stop that. So as an alternative to their concern about the flood going out and washing out a tube or a bridge or whatever, there is a driveway on the north side of the, of the lake, of the dam, or the, I'm sorry, uh, the creek. And I'll give you that proposed drawing. I've noted the four lot owners along the front there. The, at the very top, right next to 92, that's a frontage road we put in to serve the far east lot there, in the name of Keith Langneck there. And then, uh, the yellow would be my new proposed road, it's different than what I had talked to the zoning people about. And of course, I'm not an engineer and a design guy, so they're gonna, would make those determinations if we were to move forward. The blue is the ditch that runs the length of the property. This property, as, as I said, is unique, it's got creek, it's got ten acres of virgin timber. It's got high ground up on the west side, it's got flat, low ground at the, where everybody's concerned about flooding. And that'd be ideal for horse people that wanna have maybe a small barn and a round bin. They may even buy two lots in order to have five, six, seven acres there. With seventeen lots on this land, it figures out to be two-point-eight-eight, two-point-eight-eight acres for the seventeen lots on the developed fifty-seven acres. Mine's road, about five acres, I figured there's about fifty-one acres in lots. The, the orange to the far west side, right next to Warren Rush's property. He's correct, there's a, there's a, the river kind of, or the, the ditch kind of comes over close to that property. And I would propose to those people being concerned about, uh, about a washout on the tube as an emergency road, I'd gravel that in, and then we'd probably have some kind of a gate there that they wouldn't go out there except in an emergency, make that an emergency accident only. In the event, in the rare event, I would say, probably never, uh, that, uh, that tube would wash out. My greatest concern this morning is, I just learned then that the Martin Dale people had said that they wouldn't pick up kids there. So because of all that, I just wanted to come to you and explain why I thought this was a great idea, a piece to, to, to develop. Because the way it is, it's certainly not the best use with trees and ditches and that kind of thing. There's about thirty-eight acres of tillable on 67, so it's less than fifty percent tillable. I was really kind of surprised at the numbers on the GR, uh, CPR, or CR, P numbers, I guess I hadn't looked that up. But that's, the upland is very good, the flat land on the west side. But because of the concerns of the, uh, of the Martin Dale School Board and their issue, I am withdrawing this request for rezoning, so that you folks don't have to make tough decisions. So I'm withdrawing the petition to zone. And if I were Mr. Jaggersen's, I would fight Martin Dale School District on his, on his issue. Thank you.
Larry?
Yes, sir.
Have you checked with the DOT and C if you could get another entrance on 92? I don't know what their requirement is, it's gotta be at least six.
Oh, I have two entrances. The, uh, the entrance that goes into, uh, let me get a.
Now, are these, are these current entrances, or are they gonna be?
These are current entrances, always been there since going farm. The, uh, the Warren Rush land, his entrance is actually on my land, and it goes in at the very northeast corner there, next to the orange road that I proposed. That was an entrance into the field to get to the, the good crock land to the very back, in the back forty. So that's always been there. This second one I put in, uh, well, no, it was probably there. But then I was required by DOT to put that frontage road, where I've got the little marks on, on the top yellow there, to serve Keith Langneck. This was back when Langneck, well, when, um, when it was sold to the builder, he built and lived there a while. Now, however, uh, Langneck has his driveway going straight out along the east side, so these things aren't cast in stone. DOT then must have granted him a permit to give him his own private drive closer to the hill, to the east. That'd be the driveway on, on this frontage that I was more concerned about than anything when they made me put the frontage road in to serve him over there. But anyway, I, uh, the Martin Dale thing, that's a deal breaker, the school was, the school bus not going to, to stop there. I had a conversation with her yesterday, told her that I was gonna go out there and measure the road, and I'd like her to go out and look at it as well. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want you to go back to regular session.
Okay.
Shaw?
Hi.
Dukkup?
Hi.
McIntyre?
Hi.
Okay, moving on to item three. Public hearing regarding amendment to Chapter 47 of the 2009 Warren County zoning and subdivision ordinance with possible action.
Okay. This is, the, Chapter 47 is the historic preservation portion of our ordinance, it's the chapter in our ordinance. And I know we've had multiple discussions about, um, the Historic Preservation Committee for Warren County. There's a historical society for the county. And then the Warren County actually has a Warren County Historical, Historical Preservation Commission that's operated through our office. And it operates under Chapter 47 of the zoning ordinance. And I know, um, it's a five-member board that's appointed by you as the supervisors. And in the last two to three years, the attendance and lack of interest, um, from those members has been very, um, it's just not been there, um, no interest. There was a couple new members that on the board, um, in January, and then the three existing members all withdrew their membership. So that brought us to kind of, what are we doing with historic preservation, what are we doing with Chapter 47? We took it to the zoning commission, and, um, one of the members was very passionate about seeing and staying in our ordinance. So they tabled it, wanted to have a chance to see if they could round up some more members to go on the Historic Preservation Commission. We met again last month, and, um, the zoning commission has recommended to you, with a six-to-zero vote, that Chapter 47 stay in our ordinance for a year. And that we keep the two members on that are already appointed, that were new this year. And there's two more that are interested, and they're working on finding a fifth member. And then we give it until July 1 of 2020, gives them a chance to try to, um, you know, see what they can do when a year, there's, if they can get some projects go in or get some interest going. So I said ultimately, it's really up to you, but there was one member there, um, that was appointed, Alfonso, and he was appointed in, um, January. And he was very, was he not, he's very, very passionate about historic preservation. And, um, so I would like to pass that on to you, he's very, very passionate, and he feels it, it's a need, and he would really like to try to turn it around for Warren County. So I don't know what your thoughts are, but that brings us to this today. So if we keep the historic preservation, we need to keep Chapter 47, but if we're gonna dissolve Chapter, the Historic Preservation Commission, we need to remove Chapter 47 out of our ordinance.
I really like the, uh, recommendation from the zoning commission of, let's give this a year to see what, um, Mr. Alfredo can do, and his passion. I think that's a reasonable request. Well, I take a motion to go into public.
Is this?
Shaw moves.
Second.
Shaw?
Hi.
Dukkup?
Hi.
McIntyre?
Hi.
Okay, the time is now yours, if you have any thoughts about this, about our current, um, preservation, Historic Preservation Commission.
Reverend Halliburton, 1905-7 Drake Street, Carville. Uh, not worked necessarily with the Historical Preservation Commission. However, we in Palmyra have an 1870 historical church we're trying to save. We, thus far, raised, including this size five thousand, we had a five-thousand-dollar grant. Ninety-four thousand, we spent about eighty-four thousand. We have a serious problem because a small basement in the back collapsed. So that's twenty-three thousand to fill that and do the dirt related. We're in the process of raising money for that. I guess, um, I don't know what preservation does, if there is help there, we have our handout. We have fundraisers scheduled for July the 20th, which will be, an auction will be getting ready some of the pews and other items, live auction, food and music, to raise funds, and then another event in the fall. So this is a church, but it will not be used, used as a church, when it was closed there in, um, 1976. There was to be no regular church services. Group tried to save this building back in the eighties and did, it did beautifully, John. But those people have passed away, and no longer here. It belongs to the township, and the township has voted to turn it into a community center, even though it is on the historical register. Therefore, it will be used for events for the entire county. It will hold, uh, according to the architect, will hold up to two-hundred-and-sixty people for a function. So it will be a big benefit for the county. Anyway, whatever this is, if this particular commission can help us, I don't want to do away with it, if there's any help there for, um, this project that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Non Davis, 14763 Harrison Street, Indianola. Uh, we, you as supervisors, have a very bad record of maintenance of historic sites. Uh, there are a lot of buildings within the county that do qualify for historic reservation that are not disused so well. Rooting this commission is short-sighted. It is something that every county, every municipality needs to preserve their roots. The dignity of what made them a county to start with. The work, starting with a one-room schoolhouse all the way up to a courthouse being torn down on the square. We need to have this committee. The Warren County Historical Society, that museum or that fairgrounds is an amazing place to go to, to find out about Warren County's history. I know I learned a lot there when I first moved here about the county. So please, keep this commission. And if you do need a fifth member, come to me.
Thank you. Any others?
I want you to go back to regular session.
Second.
Shaw?
Hi.
Dukkup?
Hi.
McIntyre?
Hi.
I want to thank the board for everything.
Thank you very much. Somebody, Lindsay, do you have recommendations?
You know, um, it was a six-to-zero vote, like I said, to keep Chapter 47 in the ordinance, and to give it a year, appoint three new members to join the existing two. I did check, the three thousand dollars is still in the budget for the upcoming year, so, um, you know, it's really hard to use it. Board, I want to proceed with that.
Am I correct in, um, the. Am I correct in the historic preservation has restored one building throughout Warren County in its history?
They've worked with A-Lin donor to, on the little gas station out north of town.
So what exactly is like their mission? Like, is it just publication and...
Well... And that's what I'm not sure with the original. That was the mission of the original group, was that project. And, you know, and that kind of died out. And so, but there's a lot of, you know, Don stated, there's a lot of historical places in Warren County and they need attention. And so I don't know with, I know Alfonso's was, he just moved here from California. And I know he did a lot of historic stuff in California. So I know, I don't know if some of that interest he, you know, coming here, if they would take a different approach to the, to the way this commission would, would handle projects. And how they, you know, get involved with like the Palmyra Church project and the different projects. So, you know, to really state their, you know, I don't know if they need to relook at what a mission statement would be for them. And maybe, you know, maybe start from scratch. Because I just think, at first it was just an idea of one of the supervisors at the time to start historic preservation. And it just kind of all came in. And then, like I said, it was kind of geared towards that one project. And I don't know if we need to gear more towards Warren County as a whole enough towards the one project. And maybe just take, if we have an active committee who's willing to get involved and give, just maybe take a whole look at like a new mission statement and just maybe a whole new approach to it. So, and I'm open to overseeing that with, you know, carrying it. I'm open to overseeing that with them if that's what you feel is best for Warren County.
And let's, my personal take on this is that it feels as though it's the supervisor's role to, maybe if there's a nomination process and there's five spots and two people apply, I don't exactly see if that falls on the board for, for a lack of care or concern. It seems like that the organization hasn't accomplished much, or means, or has not a lot in the last decade, nor used the funds that have been allocated to them on an annual basis. If that changes, I'm happy to give them additional time. I'm not trying to be punitive to them because we don't care or disregard for, for the history of the county. It's just, we can certainly give them more time. We'll make that motion to provide a year, or if it's two, that's fine as well. But if we continue another decade where nothing gets done, you have to pull teeth to get some onto the board and then no one means a little call.
Yeah, we would set meetings up and they would, you know, we would do our calls and, oh, no, we're not gonna come. And so cancel the meeting and we reschedule one again, same, you know, same thing. So, you know, if it gets old, to schedule meetings and advertise everything and not have them show up. And so, yeah.
I'll make a motion too.
We probably don't need a motion, do we? And right now it's...
No motions either.
So we're keeping it in and offering those new nominations or the new members to, to get appointed. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item six. Discussion of the Warren County Courthouse Time Capsules with Possible Action.
During the demolition of the courthouse, three time capsules were found on the site. The first time capsule was in the nineteen thirty-eight cornerstone, sealed within the cornerstone. The second one was in the nineteen eighty-eight cornerstone. There was a sealed box behind that cornerstone. And then buried on the northeast corner was the nineteen forty-nine dedicated time capsule that was dedicated by some businesses in the community to be a hundred-year time capsule. So the question I guess I have for the board or to be thinking about, we don't have to make a decision right now, is of those time capsules, the nineteen forty-nine, because it was dedicated as a hundred-year time capsule, should be reburied back on the new site. However, the other two time capsules are cornerstone time capsules. I don't know if there's necessarily a hundred-year designation on them. I think certainly since they're cornerstones, I suspect when the building comes down, it's no longer valid to be a cornerstone, right? So we could preserve those as a hundred-year or bury them all together or do something like that. The nineteen thirty-eight is the interesting, is the oldest one, is the interesting one that doesn't have a designation of the hundred years. It would be fun to open since it is the actual original courthouse. But that's for the board to decide how we want to handle those time capsules. For now, they're sealed and they're locked up here at the administration building. For the board to be aware of that. And if you'd like to put something together, if you do want to open any of the cornerstone time capsules, perhaps we do that publicly as, as some type of event. But that was, I didn't know for right now, we just have it stored here. But I didn't know the direction we'd need to take with those time capsules.
I personally have never heard of anything but a hundred years, but that's not...
And we could, I mean, we could, we could certainly rebury it as this was the original courthouse cornerstone time capsule. And then we could just bury it to be opened in two thousand thirty-eight.
We also could take a look at the resolution. I assume there was a resolution done when they buried the time capsules. It may say something along the resolutions and I'll look into that, see if I can find out.
So that was really just to make sure the board's aware of what's, what's happening to be thinking about that. We can always take it up at a later date. Not anything that has to be done right now. They're, they're safe and secure at the administration building, so you're aware of it.
Thank you. Number seven, consider speed limit change to thirty-five miles per hour on Coolidge from R fifty-seven Highway West to Norwalk city limits with possible action.
We received a request last week to look at a speed zone reduction on this stretch of road. After, upon visiting the roadway, there were some new homes and it's getting much denser. So we have reduced the speed from forty-five to thirty-five mile per hour. And so that signs up into the Norwalk city limits, it's twenty-five mile per hour. This goes along speed limits, stop signs, things of that nature. If we feel there may be a safety issue, we're gonna go ahead and put the sign up and kind of ask for forgiveness later when you're dealing with regulatory signs. So if you do vote this down, we will put it back up to forty-five, but we recommend thirty-five and it does tie into a twenty-five zone so they're not slowing down twenty miles per hour to get to Norwalk.
David, can you, I didn't see a map. Can you visually sort of walk me through where the speed limit changes from forty-five to twenty-five?
So it's, it's G twenty-four and R fifty-seven in Norwalk. It's just south of there on Coolidge, you turn west off R fifty-seven. And then Coolidge is an asphalt road that then maybe goes for a mile or so and hits the city limits in Norwalk, maybe even a half a mile.
I would move that we change the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour on Coolidge from R fifty-seven Highway West to the Norwalk city limits.
Second.
Shaw.
Hi.
Niko.
Hi.
MacIntyre.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, supervisors report. Supervisor Shaw.
Since the last meeting, I met with the city of Indianola, Indianola Municipal Utilities. We bought a beautiful Indianola Chamber of Commerce. And have visited, it would be, I mean, I would say several county roads, but I've visited a few county roads since then.
Thank you. Supervisor Niko.
Attended a C I C S meeting, followed up with a C I R S meeting. We then took a, a couple days later, we did a conference call on C I R S's benefit plan and recommendations there too. Attended a Herta meeting, had a CERTA update, attended a joint meeting. Where all three supervisors were at regarding communication towers and I presented a presentation by Omnicom regarding La Rola. Conference call in La Rola, discussion with a few mayors, communication with Norwalk City Administrator regarding upcoming projects, emails, calls, communication regarding roads and other various county issues, set up a future meeting for county benefits to discuss additional plans and opportunities or options. Attended a meeting with Lieutenant Carter Adam Craig last Wednesday discussing a variety of issues, including some areas of Warren County.
Thank you. I met with citizens about roads and other issues on roads and in the office. An impact personnel meeting, met with employees concerning employment issues. In fact, board meeting, Warren County Joint Ninety-one Service Board Executive Board meeting. Warren County Joint Ninety-one Service Board fiscal year nineteen, public budget amendment hearing and business meeting. Warren County Emergency Management Commission and Warren County Ninety-one Combined Meeting. Special meeting for budget amendment. Met with attorneys concerning issues with lending facing the county. Met with future grant administrator. Attended a New Virginia City Council meeting. Met with attorney to discuss HR issues and with engineer as a board. Okay, item nine is public input. I have noted that there has been language in the past and loud talking while others are up at the podium. Please be respectful of others speaking. The time is now yours. It is limited to three minutes.
Once again, good morning, Don Davis, one four seven six three Harrison Street, Indianola. Man, this is a busy meeting. By all you probably know why I'm standing up here. We had a third of an inch of rain again yesterday. And once again, we were coming home from a politically event in Des Moines on one hundred forty-third Avenue. And our car bottomed out several times. And we have an all-wheel-drive SUV crossover. And we bottomed out several times in wet, muddy road along one forty-third. I'd also like to know who owns the excavator that's sitting there on one forty-third? Because I know those things aren't cheap. And it's been sitting there idle now for almost two weeks, not doing a thing. They, they put a cover in. But it is sitting in a ditch, doing nothing. And I've looked into renting those because we have a pot that we need to dredge. And they run a lot of money a day, including the operator. I also noticed on the agenda this morning that you had five secondary roads positions. Two kind of motions, congratulations. Doug, three are new hires. I'd really like to know if they've been to the operating engineer's training school and have certification to operate the machinery for which they're gonna be hired to operate. Because that is something that we need to have here in the county. We need to have qualified operators. And I can't stress enough that it is again, short sighted to say, well, they don't want qualified operators to stay here because we don't pay them enough. You pay equivalent to entry scale. And there are a lot of operating engineers coming out of school that would platter, take a job at entry scale. And you would have an employee, a union certified employee with full benefits for thirty to forty years if you hired that entry level position and gave them great working conditions. Thank you for your time this morning. Have a great week.
Skip Phillips, thirteen forty-one Broad Street. Just a quick question. Do I understand it correct that we are going to have a public hearing, or not hearing, but a, yeah, it is a public hearing, for the proposed jail courthouse on seven-two? And then you're also going to be looking at the bid results for the same project on seven-two?
Sort of looks like, you know? It kind of smacks in the face of transparency, I think. If you don't see the project until after it's bid, it seems a little weird. Thanks.
Morning, board. I'm Kelly Pym and I live at one five two ninety-three, Off the Trail. Thank you, Doug, for coming out the other day and stopping to visit with my family and my grandchildren. I go down to Quabbe camping a lot, so I drive the new highway out there to our new place out there where we store stuff. What I've noticed is that it appears that we're having a camper storage place out there. And I asked Crystal about it. She said, well, that the sheriff was maybe storing evidence out there. I just talked to Mr. Boss, they have nothing to do with that out there. So my question is, is if we're storing campers there, this is a paved road. I'd gladly like to get a permit or whatever I gotta do to store my camper out there too? Because I do camp down in Quabbe a lot. And I don't think taxpayers really wanted a storage camper unit out there. We spent a lot of money. And I paid to store my camper. So I don't know if this is somebody that in forensics part of the campers out there and their stuff. But I think the board needs to see what Dave was doing out there with the campers on our property. And maybe you'd be able to... Thank you again.
Any others?
This doesn't please me a lot, but I'm gonna share. I'm not only of eighteen seventy, this isn't quite as far back. I'll share this with you, then I'll speak to the issue. Last week, we had a major fire, a major structure fire. They had to use Irving and Elton. It was a mile. We have a hydrant that our trustees put in a hydrant several years ago. They can't pump from it, but they can fill from it. So we had three fire departments there. It was a barn, they saved. And of course, the water, they can save the house and the surrounding village. They did not save the barn. The road has been taken care of by the people that use it. It still is not in good shape. It was not in good shape for loaded water trucks. And I think somewhere along the line, there should be somewhere. It is a collector, comes in two S twenty-three. And I guess that is my request. I'm thankful no one was hurt and there was no other structures lost. But that probably, I'm sure that Doug understands what full tax was. And that's what the people discuss.
Are you staying at home? Pardon? You stand very old.
You and I.
Is Dave nineteen thirty-three, just for the public?
That was, that happened in my mother's full tax that he paid that year for his taxes and taking care of the roads. So I thought I would just share that with you for you people who do not find this old as... Yeah, that's the one, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, thirty-five, one forty-two, O B Cannon Street, Corral. I guess I'm here two weeks ago on your time today. Just curious that we understand the budget, we understand priorities, we understand that you guys all have a real popular job. All I'm asking as a resident of Warren County is transparency. Transparency means to me is a timeframe, some kind of idea of the direction we're going with the roads. That's all I'm asking. I'm asking that it's, you know, it's a big problem, it's been a big problem, it's not gonna go away until soon. I'm asking that it's a big problem, it's been a big problem, it's not going to go away until soon and everybody just needs to be patient. I understand that. But when I look at an agenda and there's not a mention of in the future of doing something with those roads, I'm not saying it has to be the road I live on. I'm just saying roads in general, in Warren County, gravel roads, that's all I'm asking. And I think that now we're going into a drier time. It's still not good, but it's drier time, which buys some time. But this isn't going to go away. It's not going to go away today, tomorrow, next year. We're going to be, you know, it's going to come back. And I think that if you just have transparency and give the people some information that the direction you hope to go and a timeframe, they're going to go. I understand that you're accumulating information. Information is great, but we need to share that. I would like to hear that as a taxpayer, a homeowner, that's all I'm asking. And I think that transparency from you people would go a long way to defuse the anger, the frustration that goes on. And I notice if you have not a popular job, I wouldn't do it for all the tea in China. But I think transparency goes a long way. And I think that's all I'm asking is the taxpayer and a homeowner, that you share the direction you hope to go with the timeframe you hope to do it in. And I think you'll notice, I could guess, that a lot of these people are going to be a little more understanding. Maybe not all, but some. I know as a person, I would be more to be able to see this, to say, here's what we're going to try and do. Hopefully we can do it in that timeframe. And I understand, I'm as patient as most people, but when I don't hear something, see something, I'm leery of that. And I know that we're not the only people in the county that has problems and we have more than one half. I'm just asking, please, put something on the agenda and hopefully inform the public in the county what you want to do. That's all I'm asking. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, 25250, along with this comment on the plan. I saw there's a meeting tomorrow on bonding something in secondary roads. What are we bonding if we don't have a plan? Any ideas?
I don't really know.
The shop side.
Oh, the shop side?
To do a referendum, if they decide to do a referendum timeframe.
Gotcha, I didn't see that.
What that bonding schedule needs to look like for all three of those projects, yes.
Okay, for the shop, but not for anything else. Okay, because I see that David does have the plan out, that's published, but it's for his usual stuff. So didn't know if there was anything, like he said, what timeframe we're looking at for learning something. So the roads are improving, but that's only because, you know, time heals some of those boils, as David has told me and initiated me on. And it is healing some of ours, but there's some other stuff too. So, thanks.
Any others?
Paula Sampson, 201353rd Avenue, Carlisle. To go along with transparency, several weeks ago, when I attended an evening board meeting, I mentioned it would be really an interesting exercise to see what our tax base is in that area, Briggs area. A month later, I believe it was Megan, that presented how our taxes are supposedly spent. And that's all wasn't good. I guess I would like to see actual expenditures. I believe, Crystal, you said that $522 of each taxpayer goes to roads. I've not seen $522 worth of gravel on our road for years, literally years. So where has that money gone and how do we find out? How do I find out actual expenditures? If we're going to be transparent, let's lay our cards on the table and find out what's going on exactly. And I agree, we, it is very frustrating to not have some sort of plan in place. We just, it seems like we did the same rhetoric when we, I hate to say complain. I guess we do complain a lot, but it's not for, it's for a very good reason. If any of you have driven our roads, I think it's very obvious. Thank you.
Any others? Moving on, before adjournment, I'd like to mention our next meeting date on June 18th at 6:00 PM. And any motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Second. Sho. Aye. Niko.
Aye.
MacIntyre?
Aye.